All right, 6:30. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, the first thing on the agenda tonight is the SP awards. SP stands for exceptional student performance this year. This award is given to students who are doing well academically and have an exceptionally positive attitude about school. They demonstrate respect and responsibility towards staff and their peers. They show courage by not conforming to peer pressure and refuse to accept anyone who bullies. The board and the district want to recognize these students by celebrating their success in each board meeting. So the students will receive a certificate here and their names will get thrown into a hat for a prize at the end of the year. In the past, it's been an iPad or something like that, so kind of a neat prize for you. So I'll go ahead and call these out. When you hear your name, come on up. And then at the end, we'll have everybody come back up with your certificates. We'll get a picture for the paper also. All right, so from Sweet Home High School, we have Carson Perry. Also from Sweet Home High School, we have Jenna Waltheis. From Sweet Home Junior High School, we have Devon Paxton. Also from Sweet Home Junior High School, we have Ella Thorne. From Loskirk Elementary, we have Mitchell Coggriff. Also from Loskirk Elementary, we have Piper Smith. From Hawthorne Elementary, we have Sydney Turpin. Also from Hawthorne Elementary, we have Brooke Doyle. From Oak Heights Elementary, we have Zeppelin Berg. And also from Oak Heights Elementary, we have Alexis Bernardin. And from Sweet Home Charter School, we have Monara Bromo. And also from Sweet Home Charter School, we have Weston Harris. All right, we will make sure that these get out to...
We missed one from Holly. There's one from Holly.
One one ran into a problem.
Oh, okay.
Kids want to come up? We need a picture for the paper. All right, we do recognize that this is a school night, so if you're here with your kids and you'd like to take them, we won't get offended if you leave. And if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, that's fine too. All right, next we have the agenda approval. We do have some changes tonight. We have a couple of late items in the consent agenda. We have stricken a couple items, one from the action items and one from the information and discussion there as well. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
We're just talking about the agenda, not the consent agenda, the whole agenda.
Yeah, just... Yeah.
So that's fine. I do have a question.
Yeah.
Discussion time. I'd like a better explanation why the calendar pieces didn't move.
We...
We're way past our time.
Right. We met again today with the association and have come up with another recommendation. And it was not one of the two that was voted on. And so I think that we need to share that. And Steve is going to talk about that tonight as well. But I think that we gave two more ideas. And it's a matter of coming up with a calendar with 191 days versus the two that we put out that had 192 days.
This is supposed to be approved last month, our calendar. So I just wonder why it's taken so long.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed? All right, motion passes. Do we have any public comments this evening? I haven't heard any, seen any written stuff. All right. Certified and classified reps. Steve, I see you here. I'll invite you up.
Yeah, we did meet today. I met with Lisa and Colleen. The original 192 contract days, we did come up. There was a couple others that had 192 and a calendar that had 191 we worked. It's acceptable. It gives us the two days that teachers wanted in December for the full break. President's Day off as well. It's the closest thing that mirrors our calendar we're currently at from last year, except it expanded. Has this ending on the 16th instead of the 15th. So I emailed our staff. You guys have got to hear a lot about, you know, things you're going on. First of all, this is something here I'll talk about right now that Suzette brought, right? So that was nice, nice burn. I'll mention that in here. But I wanted to, I wanted to get some stuff from our staff because it's been a tough year. And we know that. It's been a tough year. So I just, I sent out an email to licensed staff and the principals. And I said, "I'm going to be going to next week's board meeting, and I would like for you to share some of the great things that have been going on at your school." I think that's, I think that what we have done in the situation we have been in is incredible, and I want our board to hear about it. So I said, "Shoot me an email." Oh, man. I have some things here. And of course, you can't read it. I won't read it all because, you know, I was a chapter reader in grade school. So I, you know, I don't want to bore anybody, but I want you guys to hear. I'm going to start off with what Ann Knight sent me. And you give Ann Knight voice, and she's going to let you know. So she says, this is an email. She said, "I'm passing along well-deserved praise from Chamber of Commerce banquet guest from Larry Horton, our interact club here at the Sweet Home High School version of the Rotary Club in town and the main focus of both organizing, organization and service. Larry is our contact person who sends volunteer work our way. In a recent email, Larry said, 'Please pass on to the students how much I appreciate all they do.' Ann, that what they do is amazing. Could not ask for better kids. Their parents and their teachers have done an excellent job in raising them. I can't wait to work with them on the Easter egg hunt." She goes on to say, lets us know that Jenna Waltheis, who was recognized tonight, was one of the Mona Wyble Hero Award honorees. That we're going to be on, with the upcoming addition of the Peer Court is Back. Additional volunteer events this year that they have done. And this is some things I need to know because I wasn't quite aware of them. The Dr. Carmen Hall concert, the fall garbage pickup around campus, two blood drives, the Sweet Home Community Harvest Festival Rotary popcorn booths, the Hope Center cleaning, painting walls, and a 50-50 raffle at basketball games, the Sweet Home Christmas Gala, the Sweet Home Yard Christmas card delivery setup, and the Christmas card, and the Christmas window painting. All volunteer work by students at our high school in the Interact Club. They will be hiding Easter eggs. This, the annual Easter egg, one of my daughter's pictures came up. Earn Little Nate Melcher when they were like two or three years old with that Easter egg gun. It came up in the newspaper. But two of our students are going to be, or one of our students is going to be dressing up as the Easter bunny. That Brooke Hilsman, sorry, Brooke, but everybody's going to know it's you. But they are going to be hiding over 3,000 eggs for the kids in this community. And lastly, what Ann says, she says, "I want to..." Lastly, what was the point? "That we have fantastic kids and fantastic staff and teachers. You are making a difference. Please pass along the praise to these young people and the thank you, teachers, for the huge part that you play in molding them into the fantastic human beings they are. Love you all. Ann." Interact Club and National Honors Society, Dan Young, Interact Club. Jerika Spencer said, "So much thankfulness." And I'm going to stop here for a second because I want to tell you that I wanted the response I got was from somebody that was really concerned that we don't say, you know, make it look like we're having, like everything's easy and stuff. And I thought to myself, "Man, to shine in the light of adversity." I tell my wrestlers, "I respond to adversity marks your character." And I think that we've been doing that often. But Jerika said, "So much thankfulness. A student who refused to attempt a reading at the beginning of the year was reading to another student. Another felt safe enough to share with our entire class about being homeless and living in a car. All students may not be exactly where they should be academically, but their hearts are so much kindness, grit, leadership, and being cultivated and demonstrated. I'm extremely proud of my third graders." Suzette, her baking class did 200 of those for the Chamber of Commerce. And I'd be lying if I said I hadn't had a couple. I have students that come through and got a couple of those today from a student. I think those are for everybody to share, right? Okay. Terry Martin said, he says, "I'm incredibly proud of my teachers for pulling together, covering each other's classes, and taking care of our students' needs while dealing with the pandemic and at the expense of their own families and personal lives. We had no time lost due to quarantines with staff out." Ooh rah. Terry, were you a Marine? Okay. So in addition, our staff have been absolutely mashing our intervention tutorial work with students as we systematically tear down barriers to learning. William Coltrane at our woodshop teacher. I mean, you know, a service, a service learning project that these kids are doing. And I didn't know this. And I think it's cool. But they're building, with the Rotary Club, they're building the Canostoga huts for our homeless in the community. I had a kid come in and he says, "Got insulation all over my arms I need it from..." As they're building these, putting them together for the homeless in Sweet Home. Maggie Baristo says some things that she's proud of her, proud of the staff. "We have amazing first-year teachers who are doing an incredible job. Our behavior team has grown to three or four staff members and have not, and have not only been excelling with teaching students how to deal with their traumas at school, but have been the ones that step up when there is a shortage of staff. Our counselors is managing a caseload of students that is almost double what she would see in other school districts while getting her master's degree, and she just finished putting together schedules." Joan Riceback, well, I didn't highlight this, but she said, "Steve, not to toot my own horn." She says, "Holly's After School Garden Club and Holly Hawks had 36 students apply for 25 openings. We have, we have three adult volunteers and two teachers helping out. Our garden was a newly planted strawberry patch, Swiss jarred garlic peas, and rhubarb growing. We also plan to grow a large pumpkin patch." And I printed a picture of this little group. You got them here that have been working on that. I think that's kind of neat. I just planted onions last week, so. Leah White at the high school, she's, she says, "What I'm proud of is our art show in the library and keeping the after-school theater program going." Si Mogmar, "This makes me happy as a coach. We have been building strong membership in our swole patrol lifting program before school. We have an average of 35 kids that come every day. On our most recent maxes, March 7th, we had an average increased lift of 29.8 pounds in 15 weeks. That means that the kids got two pounds stronger with each week's program. They lift from 6:30 to 7:30 Monday through Friday. We are hoping to raise some money so we can get more equipment and accommodate more students." I know, I was worried because I told somebody the other day, "I'm worried about Si and Ryan because I thought I was one of the hardest-working coaches," but they're there every morning. So, you know, good. It's good. Tomas Rosa, you guys, leadership class. "Assemblies are back. More student activities are to follow. The students want more ways to interact with their peers, so the class is looking to provide opportunities." They just did Mr. Husky. The last Mr. Husky was 2019. And we just did it, and there was eight candidates that raised over $8,000 for the Tuberous Sclerosis Alliance. And Alex Kisselberg, he was crowned the king, and his little sister has TFs. And I don't know if you guys were aware of that, but I think that was pretty cool. "We have May week approaching. In the English classes, they are continuing to prioritize, the English department's prioritized discussion in our daily instruction." Discussion. You guys, a lot, a lot happens when you talk. And discussion. The seniors just completed the unit where they became teachers for, teachers for the day. I think some of them want to be teachers now, and some of them want to make sure they stay far away from that. Their goal was to introduce difficult vocabulary to the rest of the class. They did it in various ways. Amber Rosa, "In kindergarten, we have had a huge growth in the areas of speech and letter, sound formation since we removed the masks." That's awesome. She goes, "Mask or no mask, now is the time of the year where our Tineys readers really start to take off. Kids are blending words using silent E and read large words and writing full sentences on their own. Throughout the school, field trips are making their return, and it's fun. The fun stuff is buzzing around for the students." She says, "Most recently, my sixth, my sixth grader has been coming home so excited about some things coming up in the sixth grade. They are bringing back ballroom dancing this year and will begin learning two different ballroom dances next month that they will compete against each other in an evening ballroom dance competition." It's kind of fun. I did ballroom dancing, believe it or not. I had to. Outdoor school is also making its comeback. Deborah Phillips at Hawthorne, "We recently did our Jog-a-thon with PTC and brought in $7,310 for our classrooms. Year-end, year-end activities are planned. The field trips, track meets, ballroom dancing, outdoor schools, sixth-grade promotion, and PBIS activities. Rules roundup reminded students of PBIS rules with pride bumper stickers going home to all families." Julia Wees, you guys know she's, they're having their first baby. That's kind of exciting. So she better wait till I'm done with graduation, though. She says, "Hello, Steve. It all stems from last year. I'm very thankful that the high school administration heard our needs for credit recovery options for students. This year, we have seniors who will graduate because of credit recovery program in the main building. We have students who are going to graduate because of our alternative education program who otherwise would not have. I am excited to see how we continue to fine-tune the Alted program so we can help provide resources and education for students who need a set, need a different set of support." Heidi Boakes, "Good things at Oak Heights. Advocating for and getting bus lanes in the front of the school. Christmas caring for families in great need. Built connections with them." PTC, she says, "I can't say enough. Events are wonderful in getting students together outside the school. Self-management program events." Luke Augsberger, "New bus lanes and staff parking to promote safe routes for school. Staff have been working to implement new student government to help provide student voice. We work to brainstorm solutions with student representatives for each class." Luke, I think that's absolutely incredible because you're getting kids, you're finding your early leaders when you do that. "Staff have worked to improve our whole school positive incentive program. Be safe, be respectful, be kind. Teachers and staff are working diligently to prepare for the upcoming state tests." And our last one, I wanted to say this for last, it was my favorite. Ramona Perez, if you guys know Ramona, she's one of the heroes at the high school. She took this as an opportunity to thank. And she said, she says, "Some of the great things that have been going on at Sweet Home High School. Thank you to all the amazing things you were doing in the Manley's classes, running the sawmill and with the help of Ramil, the forestry activities." And then he looked, recently did a job fair, not, not a mock job fair. A job fair that people got interviewed and possibility of employment. Rosa, she says, "Thank you. Rosa and the leadership kids, thank you for restoring school spirit. Huge participation during Spirit Week. First, first live assembly in two years. Staff, thank you to the staff who have been pitching in and covering for each other all year long. The teachers and staff have shown unprecedented perseverance in stepping up and being flexible this year." And then in all caps, she said, "We would teach in a boat with a goat. We don't care. We just want to teach our kids." "All done, everything done through huge staff shortages. Counselors, administration, and others being willing to try new programs, no matter what comes, going above and beyond to retrieve credits for kids, flexing their usual duties to take on one-on-one forecasting for next year, whatever it takes. Life skills classes and possibly some of Haggis's classes. These guys sent out whole teams of kids cleaning up the campus. They did it all for us, and it made us proud." She says, "Note, this has been an awful year. I still love my job. I love my team. I love the spirit and guts of Sweet Home High School." And she says, "Hope I can use some of this." Well, you bet I can. And I think that kind of sums it up. This has been, things have been tough. But one of the things I like about our teachers and our administration is their servant. You know, you get a servant's heart, and you get the right people doing, doing great things. And, you know, you can do things that they say can't be done. And we have, we have persevered and gone through a lot this year and are still showing up. And, you know, I have this little piece of paper on my room, in my wrestling room. It says, "Tough is the ability to show up." And we got a lot of tough people in our district right now. So thank you, guys, for letting me do that. Do you have any questions for, for me?
We'll mention that the huts that are being built are going to do a tour. They're building the huts there at the school. It's 11 to 12 on the 20.
11 to 12, they're going to tour those?
Yeah.
These are little tiny houses? No, I actually, I went up and looked at them. They're, they're, yeah. I don't know where they're going.
Over the other side of the drives.
Okay. All right. No, yeah, that's great. How many of them are being built, do we know? Oh, wow. You know, it's a self-sufficient, you know, our chop cuts its own boards. Mills a lot of its own wood. And now that we have that mill out in the quarter, that's great.
All donated.
All donated.
Donated stuff, so.
Yeah. Community stepping up to do some good things. Seen it a few times. Been a recipient of the company, so. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right. We have, we have Velma on.
Hey, Steve, it's hard to follow you. Just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like he pretty much covered everything. I mean, the only thing that I could say that he didn't cover is the beginning of May will be Certified Week. And I sure hope that, that we show a lot of love to our certified this next month when we have Certified Week because they rock the stuff just as hard as we do. And it takes all of us to get everything going and put together and all those fabulous things that Steve's, or Steve's things happening at the high school, in all the other buildings. Pretty nice to see the kids back at school and happy. And, and I know we had breakfast this morning served for the first time in our building. Kids loved it. I hope when our new calendar comes out that for next year, there's as many seat days as possible for the kids because got to make up time. Cause gotta make up time. But like I said, Steve's hard to follow. Okay, you guys have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, next we have the superintendent's report. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Although Velma just talked about this, we put it in this month's reports and agenda. That Certified Staff Appreciation Week is May 2nd through 6th. Our board meeting will be after that. So we wanted to make sure that we place that in, although a declaration and all of the celebration will take place prior to the meeting. And then we'll celebrate at the meeting as well. So let's make it more than the week. We'll probably make it now, then and afterwards. Very important. Enrollment you will find in your packets and then the school library month proclamation actually made its way for this month. Opposed to the certified, which is May 2nd through 6th. So the proclamation for school library month is for April 2022. Whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information. And whereas the role of school library staff is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part or the instructional program of the school. And whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the school administrators and library staff in each school to support the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas lifelong learning begins and is systematically developed through the curriculum support of the school library of the elementary and secondary schools. And whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. And whereas the school library staff of Sweet Home School District have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Sweet Home School District does hereby proclaim April 2022 as school library month in all of the public schools of our, our community. And calls upon school administrators, teachers, students and citizens of Sweet Home to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of school library month.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa?
Yeah, about the enrollment. Maybe this isn't a lot, but we are down 15 seniors since January and 22 since October. That feels like a lot. Is that typical? And if it's not, what are we doing to follow up with these seniors?
Good, good question. Now, it's not necessarily typical in previous years. However, this year, in fact, we just met as a region in the same situation that there are thousands across the state of Oregon where students are not continuing enrollment, choosing alternate pathways. And so we see overall a downward trend in our region. And hoping that we can really facilitate knocks on doors and finding out what to do. In this case, there, there are obviously the care team at the high school. But also the state, in fact, we're meeting tomorrow as state superintendents to talk about the downward enrollment at the, at the state level. It's, it is affecting the funding and it's affecting our regional funding right now specifically.
Yeah, it does. In particular, the seniors is what was kind of alarming.
So is that, are we, are we getting our GED folks involved in that or?
Well, there's, in fact, if you go back to what Steve was talking about, the, the, you know, turn in this program. There's also the online program. Now some students have chosen to continue with their education just on the online portion. And we've got, we've got teachers working with both of those groups. And that's a check in, you know, there's check in every day. There's, they tend to require us to do even more of those options. And we're seeing from, and some of those folks that are being reached and those two alternative ways to get them to participate. Now there are some GEDs that are options. There are the GED options that we provide as well. And, but that's, I mean, those are the, either the numbers of who would be enrolled and that would be the student that would be enrolled in GEDs.
So when they get the alternative, is that a show of thought? Your answer?
Not for all. If you want to be that, if there is an alternative program, there's a counter.
A lot of the kids that, that, uh, we're around the, a lot of our students, we're here, a lot of our seniors have graduated. So that's, that's part of the, we, it's weird, COVID is weird because of what it's done to us. So many of the kids that are, we have seniors, we have one ex kid, not even a name, but graduated. We had kids like that all, all through this, this part of the second semester. Even in some of the first semester, then they're gone. But, I mean, we'll be back to graduations by check and hand, they graduate. So that's, now we do lose some kids, I mean, and we've got, oh my kids, listen, so we're here.
So how many, how many of the 15 are, are ones that are graduating?
I have to go back and look at my list, just to see, if you get a list, every time a kid goes, I'll be a list, I'm part of that, but I have to go back and check with my, my server. But it's, it's a fairly significant number of them. And it's, it's going, and that's what Tony was talking about, our recovery program, there's some of those, my boss would be lost. We had one today. He, he had a lot, he has a lot of challenges.
Some of the kids that I was grading online are finished now.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check with the, 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 that.
All right, any other questions? Great, thanks Lisa. Next we have the consent agenda. Approve the minutes from the March 14th, 2022 meeting. Prove the hire of Samantha McMahon, elementary teacher at Foster Elementary for the 2022, 23 school year. Accept the resignation of Christie Chapman, special ed, basic life skills at Sweet Home High School, effective June 16, 2022. First late item, accept the resignation of board member Janice Albert, position number two in Liberty, effective April 11, 2022. And approve the hire of Miranda Lind, elementary teacher at Oak Heights Elementary for the 2022, 23 school year. Second. We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Any of those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next we have budget update and ESER report.
Okay, thanks Jason. Item 7A in the board packet. First, the budget update. We are now nine months into this fiscal year. And year-to-date spending is up just over $966,000 compared to the same time period last year. The two major reasons for that, salary and benefit costs have increased by over $800,000. And supply and material costs have, and that includes bus fuel, have increased by almost $175,000. On the next page, this is just an update on our federal elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds for ESER spending. We have spent all of our ESER one funds. We are currently spending down our ESER two funds. And we are beginning to spend some of our ESER three funds. And you can see on that page, the areas that we've spent those in so far. Yes Dale? Seven, eight, first, the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, overall for the general fund, we should stay within what we had budgeted. The major reason for that, even with inflationary costs. As has been mentioned, definitely appreciate our staff filling in. You know, we've had openings and, you know, we had budgeted for more labor costs. And just by not being able to fill all of those positions where we are realizing savings this year.
All right, thanks Kevin. Next we have a facility report. Josh, start with.
I told you guys, I would take a short little video of what the bus loop out here at Foster turned out to be. And so here we got buses that will be coming in and exiting it out and getting them off the road. It's really cool. And then what we'll do is we'll go over to the high school then. I'll take a little video and I'll show you guys how that room turned out. I showed you guys along the way when we were working on it, but it turned out pretty good. So we'll take a look at that also. So then as you see here, this is the approach that we had to pour for the city's permits. Boom truck, definitely, we are the fastest concrete crew you'll ever see. Look at that, under 30 seconds, 30 yards of concrete. That's pretty impressive, I would say. So here we go, they're pulling in. This is that other entrance that we talked about before, that we were able to get put in when we were doing the remodel. There's the main front entrance over here where the parents are dropping off. Gets to go into the main front entrance. So much better. If we go to the other side of where the buses are at. You see that this area over here, parking lined out for staff to be able to use this area also. So they'll get them off the road that's out front and make them park in through here. So over here at the high school now, we'll walk through the counseling office and see how this turned out. So remember from the last video I took, Michelle was over here in this corner saying she was thriving under construction. And this is what the space looks like now. New desk. Get a little wall there. Did the same thing there to tie it together as we come around. And then a little half wall so we can separate that area to the person that's sitting there. Doesn't have everybody coming to her desk thinking that's the place to go. We did bulletin board kind of up and around there. It gives it a softer feeling here. And then the new, there. This space, we added this window in through Kristen's office. It goes all the way through so the light can go all the way in from outside. Space turned out really, really good. If you come on down the hallway, this is the other part that we did, kind of helped tie things together is in the, this room was full of the old file cabinets before. And so now we have all the files that run along in the built-ins so that there's places on top for workstations. We're able to have a workstation there and the copper machines that are going here. So actually made a nice space out of this room also. That's all I have for tonight. Just a quick little update, just wanted to show you guys what the projects turned out. Thank you.
Great, any questions for Josh? Was that snow? Thanks Josh. All right, next we have a first reading of a pretty good sized series of policies here. This is just a continuation or a review of all the policies. So how far did we say we were from?
About 18 months from now. So the chunk of the time, you can see that the first reading moved into the D's from, and then, then we'll go back to the A and the B's for the second reading. But they've been chunking now about a month or a time.
Okay.
So.
It's gonna take some time, but it's gonna be well worth it. Yeah, just. Sooner than 18 months?
Right, I'm busy. But at any rate, it is a lot.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and we're able to weed some out too, right? That no longer apply, so they just go away.
They've listed here as of the.
All right, so that's a first reading on those. Go through them. Any questions? Pass those through to Lisa and, or we can bring them here and talk about them or whatever we need to do there, so. And then next we have the second reading of the last stack of policies there. This is a second reading, so we can take action on them tonight, but it has to be unanimous and we would have to create an action item for that to happen, so. So these two additions in our late items are in the packet we got today. So we're, we are going to remove that strikeout for the board secretary. Because these policies were eliminating Deborah Brown's spot in here. Current secretary.
Okay, well, we weren't striking Brown out, but the new policy did not have only, it did not have the title of the secretary. And so we were thinking we'd go back and say, you could make a recommendation of what would like that third executive body to be. But they, they had removed that title.
That's fine. Okay. Works for me. I agree if you have three. We do have her as our, as our regular secretary, which is talking about doing here, which is they added some language for that. And I didn't mind, it was the one was being, like, removed. I noticed that over the weekend. I, I would think if we were gonna move forward with the.
Yeah, that was the only thing I had.
Move these forward to an action item? Move these forward to an action item? I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion to change board secretary to second vice chair in policy BCB and move the stack of policies forward to an action item, correct? Okay.
Do you have a question about this? Because according to this, the board secretary is Julie.
Julie would be the.
Yeah.
Board secretary.
Board secretary, which means doesn't necessarily have to be in this at all.
About the.
Board secretary.
I don't see the harmony in there.
Well, I, I don't either, in that event. This was to replace, I mean, basically it was kind of getting to designate the board officers. Julie would answer for the board officers. She would be the, she'd be the board secretary.
I don't see a problem with that being language in policy to make sure that position stays in place.
I, I agree, but I don't think it's important. It's under the board officers, so it doesn't necessarily be.
So you're saying we need language in there that allows for a third officer?
Right.
So maybe mirror the language of the vice chair and the second vice chair section. And then that will keep the board secretary designation as a staff member, like it says here, and set out the duties, I guess, of the second vice chair. Your concern is having to enlist in the board officer section?
Right, well, yeah, that's part of it because it's, because as it's defined here under its policy, it's the board officer. Whereas Julie is a board officer, but she is secretary to the board. They're kind of aligned there.
Right.
The only time that we come into where somebody would have to keep some sort of notes would be during executive session. Where we don't have, so that means we are, are board officers.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we kick this one out until next month? And? Come up with the language to.
I'll revise my, my motion to re, to move everything else forward and leave this one there. Keep the section of board office.
Okay. So the motion is to move all policies but BCB forward to an action item. Any other discussion?
I was just going to say we do need to leave something about board secretary in there. Or executive sessions, right?
Yeah, we'll try to move that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're moving forward to second reading.
No, correct, just the second reading. Yes, yeah, yeah. All right, no other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will add let's replace action item A with board policies. Second reading.
Chief, chief user here, uh, unit here. Yeah, that, well, he doesn't sign to.
Yeah, we can work that out. All right, so now we'll move on to action items. So the action item we have is board policy second reading minus board policy BCB.
We would accept board policies second reading.
Second. Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion passes. Do you have any board comments tonight? I would like to say how much I appreciate Janice Albert and her dedication through everything that she's been through with, you know, being in meetings and, and everything. It's, it was hard on her. I know that. So, you know, just want to make sure and recognize her publicly and her dedication to this. It's, it's appreciated and she's going to be sorely missed very much, so.
Jason, what, what's the process now with replacing her?
The, the process should be, since it's a zoned seat, it opens up to, we advertise it for 20 days to people in the zone. We get somebody from the zone, then we review a point based on that. If nobody from the zone applies, then we open it up wider and go on to that.
Are we accepting her?
Under the consent agenda. Right, yeah.
I, I, I was going to say that qualifies, you're quite mistaken.
Not sure. Okay. I think it would be obvious that once the, once the resignation happens, it's vacant. It is, yeah. Any other comments? All right, so let's recess for, let's recess for about, well, till about 7:30. And then we will come back and enter into executive session under ORS 1926602D to discuss classified bargaining and ORS 1926602A to consider employment of a public officer, employee, or staff member or individual agent.